All right, I'd like to call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, January 22nd and January 4th, 7:00 PM. You don't rise for them. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanning?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Osper?
Here.
Ryan's?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda as submitted this evening, unless there's changes that need to be made.
Sure.
Thank you so much for that support.
Seven.
All right, do you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if there's anybody that would like to come forward at this time. All right, moving along, we have our council meeting minutes of January 8th, 2024. I'm looking for a motion approved unless there's changes that need to be made.
Move to approve the minutes for January 4th, January 8th, sorry.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you had an opportunity for accounts payable review this evening.
I did. Everything pretty standard. It's large mostly because we did two, a couple of big tax payoffs. Did our distributions, which makes up the majority of the funds here. So with that, I will make a motion to approve checks 772-70 through 77302, ACH 684 through 706, and EFT 699 for a grand total of $879,047.35.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions regarding accounts payable? Yes.
On the locked payment for the pavilion, it says final payment. Were there additional payments that we've made prior to?
Correct.
What was the total? I thought it was supposed to be $100,000 that we approved. Can you go over that?
It was, the previous payment was about 20 some thousand, I think. So the total is 120.
And are there any past due's in that amount? Because I know we had the donation of the roofing material.
That, that hasn't been installed yet, but that's, I mean, that's not a billable item. There's nothing in that billable.
All right, all right, I wasn't sure.
Do we have to do something to change what we approved, which was 100,000?
Go ahead. Yes.
The bills as submitted are under the approved amount by city council when the project was awarded.
Okay.
I thought that was 100,000.
A little bit more than that.
Do you want to, yes, go ahead, Tom.
Not on that, but one other quick question. I was just curious, something I'd never seen before, and it was, there we go, Proud City Onboarding? I was just curious what that was.
Yeah, that's the new website.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
We're not Proud City here, are we? Was it?
It's the, it's the, it's a provider. It's a provider. All right, if there's no other questions regarding accounts payable, I'm looking for support for Brandon's motion.
Support.
All right, thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Osper?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. And now we have an opportunity for our Williamson Depot Museum report with Mitch Luwski. He's here. Would you like to come forward, please?
Good, thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
So, I'm Mitch, president of the museum, our all volunteer board, and I thought we would try to do a yearly report to the city. It's a city building on city property, and I just thought, we've done, we've done one since I've been there, and I thought, well, we'll just do that. So I've got two parts. One's gonna be like a physical, what we, what we're dealing with, with the building, because we're closed right now, renovation. Then I'll talk about activities and stuff, and then I can answer some questions. Right now, we, we are, well, you know how building projects go. You think you're gonna do one thing, and then you do another. Okay, so, we decided that if you've been in the museum, in the front room there, there was a drop ceiling that was originally put in, in the 1980s when it was open with recessed lighting, very un-period from an 1890s building. So, we sat there for, I know, like, the 18 years I've been on the board saying, can we change this? And so, we decided, we had enough money, so, Jack Palmer, a local builder, they came in, removed the drop ceiling, and put about one by four inch shiplap wood, painted white, so it matches kind of this foyer area we have in, so it looks 1890s, not 1980 something. Then, we had Lakota Electric, another local group, the Bolstrom family, they did the electrical work. We had some dimmer switches, and then we had period lighting, dropped lighting that you would see, and they donated that lighting to us from another project. And so, we've got new lights in the front room, and new ceilings, so it's going to look and feel like the 1890s, not this hybrid, which is, and it kind of feels neat. Well, then we decided, well, jeez, the wall is yellow, and it's faded yellow in places where we've had displays up, so what the heck? We got plastic on the floor, let's paint it. So, Sunrise, Williamson Sunrise Rotary Auxiliary Work Group, I believe is their name, they volunteered some people to come in the next week or two and paint. We actually met down there with the museum. Emily's one of the board members that was down there with me today, so we're discussing painting, so we're gonna make it more uniform in there. And then, of course, what the heck, that's steam cleaning the carpet. So anyway, that's also down the road. So, then I thought, what about those covers to the light switches? But that's another project for another day. You know how that all works. But I just want to tell you that 100% of this was paid for by donations to the museum and membership, so the city's not being billed any of that. And as long as I've been on the board, you know, we, the city does a great job at cleaning the sidewalk off and the parking lot when we have bad weather, and putting down salt. And that's pretty much, you know, what we have you do, and then, of course, the big thank you, one year here, a year ago, to pick up our, our heating and lighting bill, because that just really freed us up for that. So I do appreciate that. So, we're hoping to have kind of a community open house. My guess is it would be late February, maybe end of March, to show off our new interior, and then we can talk to people then about, you know, other things we're doing. But I just wanted to let you know that we have always taken on all of the, we put the new roof on, we did the exterior painting in 2014, that's always been 100% paid for by museum, museum donators and benefactors. So, I just want to let you know, so if somebody says, well, who paid for that? You know, get the country kitchen, why, that's the city! They did not. I'll also tell you, in last summer, we had the Williamson Sunrise Rotary Work Group, Chris Abraham, Toby Weston, and Joe Bonner, they crawled underneath the building. The building was basically moved from the railroad track site and plopped on some concrete blocks. And so, just dirt under there. And so, they put this clean down and shorted up with some support beams that we had some deterioration with, and we had found that out with Lakota, had volunteered their time in October of 2022. We had a, we found out that one of our groundwriters was actually live, which is not a good thing. So, they came and fixed it for free, then they were fixing it, saying, hey, you might want to get somebody underneath there. So, that's been, so we've got a lot of volunteer support from the community, so we're really happy about that. And again, we paid for all of that. And the one thing that we did, we got agreement with Consumers Power in 2021, that summer, if you notice, there's art paintings on the art fence or the art wall, and we worked with consumers on that. And so, we have a rotating group, and we usually, we deal with these high school juniors and seniors who are advanced art students with Megan Kubu. So, I think we're gonna get one more. I think her semester started today, not on teaching, I don't know about the calendar at school, but we got one more, I think, coming. And so, we rotate those out, the kids' names are on them, and we do some publicity. So, that's kind of the physical structure of our building. So, you know, I just want to let you know that we're, we're doing okay financially, because we undertook this, but of course, the support from the city with the service on the outside and paying our heating and lighting bill is, was very helpful. So, that's the building portion of, of the building. Our operating hours, in September of the previous, of 2022, I said we need to be open more than we are, so we're open from 1:00 to 6:00 on Wednesdays. It's free admission, if anybody needs to know that. We also meet on some second Sundays of the month, and also by appointment, people who can't come on Wednesdays and they're out of town, so one of the board members will meet with them. And I've been starting to write down the totals of people who come in. So, in the year from January 1st to December of 2023, we had at least 370 people visit the museum for various activities. We had, and was, and then we took the last four months of September through December of 2022, and I compared it to the last four months of this year, and we were up 54% in attendance. So, we're getting people down to the museum. Our biggest months were April, August, October, and November. February and May were our lowest attendees. We had about 230 people come just on Wednesdays last year, from 1:00 to 6:00. And then, on our weekend programming, we have our annual August open house, which you're all invited to with free ice cream. We had between 30 and 50 people there for that. We had a Girl Scout county, but she kind of took a break, and I, it's just not counting. So, that's why my numbers on that one are a little off. We also are a meeting place for various groups. The Ingham Livingston County Rural Letter Carriers Association meets there once or twice a year. The Williamson High School Classic 1973 met there this summer. We hosted a Caddell, Capitol area District Library reading pop-up program, where we had 49 kids and parents there for a summer reading program. We were, they were doing, I think it was machinery, we were, we were trained, it was a theme, that was the trains. The week before, they were at a barn in Webberville. It was a Webberville-Williamston cattle joint operation. So, we had 49 community members in there. Alpha Delta Kappa Educational Sorority, these are older teachers, retired teachers, I did a program for them, and we had 16 people there as well. And in addition, the Boy Scout Troop 62, the Boy Scout Troop 63 girls portion of that, they meet there when they need to. Red Cedar Garden Club has met there from, from the entire time. And Williamson Volunteer Park Committee meetings, they meet about four times a year on Thursdays at noon with Heather and that group. So, and we don't charge those people any, any rent. If you have an organization, we charge rent, because we have to have that taken care of. We've started to reach out in the community. We've had about a year and a half of Way Back Wednesday photos on our Facebook page, Flashback Friday, Who Is This Tuesday and Thursday, but I can't really get into the office to get some of the photos I need because of construction. So, we've gone on hiatus. We've put on the last two Veterans Day dinners at the Brookshire. We're planning on a third one this year as well during November. That's a fundraiser for us, but we think it's also a gift to the community. I know Terry, he was at my table, we were gathering that night. We have a YouTube channel that we've got a few things on, and I just actually produced two little snippets today at home. You may see some oral histories, very short and sweet on some things in the community. We also are digital scanning, as many of our old photos as we have, we bought a high-frequency scanner, or high, it does like 150 photos in one minute. We were doing one photo every 31 seconds. Okay. So anyway, and then we store those on two storage units, one's in the museum and one's off-site, so if there was a fire, we would have a digital copy of the information. We also loaned all of our yearbooks that the Capitol area District Library needed to scan them, so they're gonna be digitally online every yearbook. And we, I think the oldest one's 1899, there's a 1907, 1908, I'm a yearbook guy, 1928, 29, 32, and then from 1949 on up to 2023. Those will all be accessible free of charge on Capitol area District Library's website, and then we'll have a link on our website as well. So they, they only had like 20 some years, and they were for the, for the pop-up thing. I'm like, why do you guys only have that many? He goes, we don't know where the rest are. I go, come in here. We just opened the cover, I said, here's everyone that's ever been done. So we're excited about that, because we do get a lot of requests for information from people out of town. We don't send yearbooks out, we don't send our information out. You have to come down there. Well, if you live in Utah or Colorado, it's not gonna be likely that you can get the 1962 yearbook, but the Capitol area District Library thinks they're gonna be done in February, I believe. And Earl Wolf was kind of a mover and shaker on that for us. We had a donation for Pass Perfect, which is a computerized catalog program, that we're doing some really robust and modern cataloging of our items that get donated. And I think that's pretty much it. I have reached out, I think we're gonna do some programming with the elementary third and fourth graders this year. Being a retired history teacher, the state every so often moves what years you do Michigan history. Sometimes it's fourth grade, sometimes it's third, well, they decided to split it between third and fourth. So, I reached out to those teachers in the fall, I think I'm gonna go there for a day, and then they're gonna come down to the museum, and we actually have some grant money so we can pay for the school buses, if that's a budget issue, like, we've got grant money from a retired person. So, we're hoping to get more people into the building, but we know that everybody can't come to the building, because they don't live around here, but they still follow Facebook or social media. So we're trying to balance the two. I just want to remind you, just last thing, really, we're an all-volunteer group, nobody's ever gotten paid since we moved that sucker there in June of 1979. We meet with visitors, we, we market the museum, I'm on a Michigan museums, or Michigan Museum Association volunteer group, we meet once a month virtually, we talk about how to, some pitfalls of all volunteer museums, and what things are good, and how to get people engaged at volunteer-run museums. And so, our budget, to be on that committee, has to be under like $150,000. I'm like, oh yeah, we're under hire for default, for you watching. So anyway, that's, so we're kind of excited about that. We're one of the few places that has a museum. We're a small town, and our, our target market in our, when they passed the museum in 1986 and 87 through the city council, we were supposed to preserve, collect, protect, teach Williamson City, but the four surrounding townships, Wheatfield, Williamstown, Locke, and Leroy. So we've done some, I've done some reaching out to Webberville people as well. So, we just want to make this a really robust thing and let people know that people are coming in, but I, I had no idea we had, you know, over 200 people in when I'm there on Wednesdays. So it's been, it's just been really fun, and you can come down, and as I said, if people can't meet then, they just leave a message or email us, and we'll meet with them. Like, I came down one Sunday, a guy was from Houghton, Michigan, Houghton Hancock area, and he was in for July, so I met him down there. And I'm not the only one. Linda Cicillano has met with people and others as well, I think Emily has too. So, we just want to let people know that we're open, we're gonna be open, we're vibrant, we're gonna be new. You can reach out to us personally, you can show up or digitally, you know, through Facebook and the Caddell yearbook thing. So I just thought, I do this every year, just kind of fill you in, so if people say, hey, what's the city paying for? Or, oh yeah, but no, this is how this is going, you just feel kind of more up to speed about what we're doing, and we're all part of this community, so we need to know what we're doing.
Mitch, thank you so much.
Second.
Thank you. All right, moving along our agenda, we have our first action item, which was a resolution to designate our city manager, John Hanifin, as our street administrator. We do have a memo here, I'm gonna turn this over to John so that he can kind of go over this with us.
Thank you, members of council. So, the former city engineer was the street administrator in every community that receives Act 51 funds, we're worried to have somebody designated in that role. You know, largely ceremonial, I'm not out there filling potholes by myself, I've got plenty of people to do that. So, pretty straightforward, it's just a resolution to appoint me as the street administrator.
All right. I'm looking for that requested action that's on the memo.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to appoint city manager John Hanifin as the Act 51 street administrator for the city of Lexington.
Thank you so much for that work. Thank you, Steve. Any questions or discussion? Holly, will you call the roll? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
All right. Our next action item is our office cleaning contract. We have a memo in here as well. I'll go ahead and turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So we had talked in our last strategic planning session last year about bidding out the, all the different kinds of services that we have, and this was one of the contracts that came up mid-year. So, we did advertise, we had, I think, four community, or four different companies come through the walkthrough, but Deets submitted the only proposal. They're, they're the incumbent cleaner, they've done the, the work for a number of years, so. And their, their price was only a small, small increase from their, their current contract rates. We did add the additional service at McCormick Park Public Restroom, and the plan there, so our, our public work staff, they, they do do the cleaning, and they're the ones that respond to the really, you know, kind of like awful, bad messes midweek. But what this would do, they would clean the restroom on Friday, to get us ready for the weekend, and then they would clean it on Monday. And so, I thought we'd try this out for the year. Not that our guys don't do a, a good job of doing it, but, you know, this is a professional cleaning company, and, and, you know, the expectation is that they would do, you know, they'd be more thorough, I guess, so.
Yes, Dan.
Does, with the addition of the McCormick Park bathroom on there, I'm assuming that's the bathroom closer to Putnam, does that include the one over by the ban shell as well?
It does not. Just includes the, the North Putnam Street sign bathroom, because that's the one that's open here.
All right. Excellent. I'm looking for the recommended motion. Oh, yes, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm really impressed with what they wrote, by the way. Their preservation, the layout, and extensive, it's really good.
Yeah, they did a good job. Yeah, absolutely.
And I understand that restroom is, is one of the reasons why that park is so attractive to people in the area. I think it's the only park that has like a really adequate restroom, so good idea to have a clean.
All right.
I move that we approve the cleaning contract with Deets for the three-year period of January 2024 through January 2027.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Tom. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, next we have our resolution to participate in a property tax payment reduction program with the Ingham County Treasurer. I'm scrolling through here, what page is that? I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and turn this over, is it? To Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. What this, what this kind of boils down to is, in the last few years, there's been a large amount of grant money available for the Ingham County Treasurer to assist those who are facing foreclosure, for tax foreclosure. Unfortunately, that money has run out, the program ended, and he has looked extensively, but he's not found any replacement grant money. One option he has come up with in reading the tax laws is there is, the tax laws will allow the county treasurer, when they foreclose, or are getting close to a foreclosure, and are trying to collect, they can waive penalty and interest that has accumulated on the property. And there's three different ways they can do it. Two of the ways would require the city to have to kick back some money, because essentially, when we settle with the county, they pay us for all our delinquent taxes, not only the principal bond owed, but any accrued penalty and interest. And if we went into this program with us having to issue some back, when he, when the, when the county treasurer waives a penalty and interest, they could come back to the city and say, okay, you've got to pay us back what we had paid you earlier for those penalty and interest charges. He assures us he is not going to take that option, he is taking the third option, which those costs, any chargebacks, would be covered by the county, so there would be no cost to the city in doing this. However, even though there's not a cost to the city for this, for him to be able to go forward, it still requires approval from each governing body of all the taxing units in the county, yeah, in the county. So, so that's what we have tonight. We're just basically asking for the approval to participate in this program, which then gives him the authorization to help, try to help out people where he can in waiving some of the accrued penalty and interest at no cost to the city.
All right. All right, thank you, Tom. All right, we've got several people here, so I'll start with Scott.
Yeah, how close does this counter hit you for, in terms of helping people?
Well, if, as you can see in the memo, the Ingham County Treasurer's office was very aggressive in getting those grants in the past, and they, in the last few years, have paid out 3.2 million to over 450 people within the county. For the city of Williamson, we typically do not have too many that go to foreclosure, very few parcels, so it's not gonna, I mean, you know, we won't see much of that affect us here, but countywide, I really can't answer. I mean, I'm sure that the, the grants would not only cover accrued penalty and interest, it would accrue all their back taxes.
Okay, that's my understanding.
And this, of course, isn't only gonna cover penalty and interest, so, so it's gonna be a, you know, a far cry from what we had before, and I know the county treasurer's a little disappointed that there hasn't been more money funded or funded from the state level to continue this program, because obviously, it's gonna not be quite as helpful as what was available in the past.
All right, Dan, you have a question?
So, this sounds like a very, very good program, and the grant money sounds like it was a great thing for the county. Just with there being multiple options, and the county treasurer being the one that implements those, if the situation were to change at the county, and something like he, they went with one of the other options, does this revert back to us to have to approve it again? Like, let's say we get another treasurer, or whatever else, would we, would we get a chance to look at that, have to reapprove the resolution or anything like that?
He, he has actually spelled out that he was only gonna take the, what they call the third option, so he's only asked for the approval of the third option.
Gotcha. Yep, and then Terry?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, on the second, whereas, whereas the treasurer has elected, use only one of the three possible methods to reduce, et cetera, et cetera. And then, that's a great catch, if there, you know, the Ingham County Treasurer, that is an elected position, and if there was a new treasurer, and there was new policy that was put in place, if there was something different than that, then we would have the, we'd have the option to have a, a subsequent resolution.
Okay, Terry?
Just a quick, could you give a estimate as to how many people, many households in Williamson? We've got 1,200, 1,500 households, how many of those would be affected by this? Do you have any idea? Any guess?
Very, very few, I think, in the last year or so, since I've been here, I think there's only been like a couple that even get to that, why do I say a couple, like two, three that get to that point? We're fortunate in this community that, I know it's a struggle for a lot of people, but people have been able to, you know, maintain their homes, or stay in homes, and come up with the money somewhere, so we're fortunate here in Williamson.
Okay, so, single digits?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think when Rachel was here, I don't think it ever exceeded more than a handful in a year. Tim, do you have a chance to look this and go over it?
Yes, and I should disclose that I worked with and advised the county treasurer on this program for all municipalities, countywide, not just Williamson. We didn't even talk about Williamson, it was generic.
Yep.
And the other options were to actually allow those, first of all, the property has to be under a poverty exemption.
Right.
And if it isn't, then it just doesn't even apply to that. And the first two options would have allowed some taxes to be waived, and, yeah, there would be chargebacks to the city, but no matter what option you take, the city must, city council must approve by resolution. And the third option that he's going with is just the penalties, fees, and interest, and there's no chargeback to the city.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, I'm looking for the recommended action on the memo.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the Ingham County Treasurer to participate in a payment reduction program as a potential benefit to qualifying taxpayers of the city of Williamson.
Thank you, Dan, join support.
That's all right.
All right, thank you all. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the role for this, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
All right. Our last action item for this evening is the resolution to adopt the Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2024 through 2028. Uh, this was on our last council packet, this is just the formal resolution coming forward. Um, does anybody have any questions for John, or John, do you want to, for our community viewers, just recapturing?
Sure, uh, the staff and the Parks Committee have been working on the plan for about six months. Um, we had our required public hearing at our last council meeting. The Park, the Parks Plan was, hard copy was available at the front desk here, and also online for, oh, a couple of months at least. And so, this is the form resolution to adopt the plan. Should it be successfully adopted, we'll, staff will assemble the, the necessary documentation and submit that to the state of Michigan, and then we'll have a certified Parks Plan for the next five-year period, which allows us to seek a number of different, uh, trust fund grants that are probably the most prominent. There's a number of other grants too, through the, through the state of Michigan.
Great, thank you. Questions or, yeah, or recommended motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution adopting the city of Williamson 2024 through 2028 Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you so much for your support, thank you. Uh, if there's no discussion or questions, Holly, will you call the role, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osser?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. Uh, moving along to our discussion items, road diet, that's always, um, on our discussion items list, top and foremost. Do we have an update from MDOT when they might be available to come and debrief us on the public, uh, response period?
Yeah, so there was a, we had an email conversation with a number of folks there, uh, last week, and there's a little bit of a disconnect about, um, their ideas of why they would come to a council meeting before a public meeting, and I said that it's to make sure that we're all on the same page for, um, the upcoming public meeting.
Right.
So, um, makes sense to me. So, um, obviously, no one could come tonight, we're still hopeful to have somebody here at the first meeting in February.
Okay.
And then the idea of having a, a public meeting later, uh, in February, if it bleeds over into March a little bit, that's, that's okay, too.
All right.
But we will, we will have definitely, just for, for folks paying attention, we will have a, an additional public meeting to talk about the road diet. Likely have a little bit larger venue than what our room is.
All right, excellent. Yes, Terry?
What's your current target for beginning that?
Well, with, that was, we reported on that in the last meeting, with MDOT, after they went through the, the, their, um, online public input, um, for, for the road diet, in their, at their request, for the, the city to have an additional meeting, which we're certainly willing to do, um, their words were, were that this would push, push it into a fall construction, um, just based on, you know, the, the, the timing and how their, their budget works, and how they would have to, you know, winnow their way through their process.
All right, fantastic. Uh, construction project updates, we've got a couple of things going on in the city right now.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, Lloyd Street, there was, uh, there's, Consumers is down there, um, doing natural gas project, and some of that, um, is to make sure that, that, that work is done prior to starting our, our construction project. Um, later this spring, um, we will be doing Williams and Lloyd Street, uh, this spring, along with the additional work of the, the paving work on North Putnam, which all of those will start up sometime, um, in April, when the weather is better. There's also some, there will, if you remember in the last, oh, really, geez, since I've been here, we've had, um, a number of different telecommunications companies coming, um, bringing, uh, new services to town, and, um, and I didn't see this today, and I don't know how I didn't see it, because I'm always up and down Main Street, but the mayor pointed out, there's some red, red marker paint on, uh, on the block, heading to the, uh, to the west, um, around the light poles, and then there's some blue paint, and that's for a directional war that'll take place here soon. Um, the red's for the electric and blue is for water, so, so those are going on, and there's a number of other projects. So, just got another permit today for, uh, a different company doing work around Elevator Street that will take place, uh, later this spring. So, a lot of telecommunications stuff happening.
Excellent, great. Thank you so much for that update, I appreciate it.
I got blue paint in my area today.
Oh, lucky you. On the snow that's gonna melt in the next, you know, 48 hours?
I have green in mine.
All right, fantastic. All right, moving along, correspondence received information only. We do have a letter from Sowing Growth, which is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that is responsible for our extremely popular Eastern Ingham Farmer's Market. They do have a brand-new, uh, Director of the Farmer's Market, Krista James, so I'm excited to be able to meet her and, and see what she does with, uh, Williamson Farmer's Market, and that'll kick off in May, um, so that's exciting.
She's amazing.
Yeah, good, great, I, I knew you'd probably be able to give us some information, Scott.
After meeting on you with the board, you wouldn't believe it.
I'm excited.
We were like, oh my God.
Yeah, it's like, great. Well, I can't wait for her to get started and come and introduce herself to council, so please extend that invitation, because I know you're part of that board, so, very excited.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, good. Well, we love our farmer's market, so it's exciting to see that happen. All right, uh, moving along, we've got our department head reports. Um, I know, John, we get a memo from you in the off week, but I'll go ahead and go right to you.
Yeah, this, uh, gonna be another busy, um, couple of weeks, starting in February, with boards and commissions, planning commission will need, got a couple of different site plans that, that should be at that meeting. Um, had a good DDA meeting last week, talked about, um, a little bit of a, you know, kind of pre-discussion about budget, um, moving forward for the new fiscal year, did the same thing at, uh, at Parks. Um, since we were talking about flow statistics before the, uh, council meeting today, I just want to point out, it has been three police chiefs and three city managers running where, um, we ordered a police car, and we finally, we didn't talk about that in council panel, but we finally were able to take delivery on the, on the police vehicle, which is Cory, Rachel, John, you know, Wolf, Young, White.
Whites, yep, yep.
Finally there, so, it was getting to finish line, so that's cool.
Awesome.
And just, just, uh, Councilmember Jenkins had a question about the pavilion. On August 28th, that was approved for 119,000.
Excellent.
So, just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, thanks.
So I have?
Thanks for finding that information while we were, uh, working on this, that's great. Um, we do have our, uh, our reports from Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering. They handle all of our permitting for any work that's being done within our, uh, city limits for the city of Williamson, whether it's residential or commercial, so if you do have any questions regarding something that you see, um, as far as permits being pulled or work being done, please see John, and, and he will give an answer from Livingston County, uh, for you. Tom, it's your turn, Treasurer update.
I don't really have a lot to add at this point. Uh, we're still kind of in the heart of the winter tax building, of course. Uh, we'll be wrapping them up mid-February to end of February, I mean, hopefully, people come in before, by mid-February, before the end of February, but, um, and as City Manager, um, mentioned, we've done some preliminary talks on some budget, um, prep, and, uh, we'll be starting that soon. Um, a few other things that are kind of in the works, but we're in the very, very early stages, and we're still working with some other vendors and stuff, so I guess we, I won't really get into them a whole lot until we get a little more detail, but.
Okay, excellent. Well, it's great to have you here, and thank you so much, appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Moving along, our, uh, agenda, we've got our committee subcommittee reports. Anybody attend a meeting that they'd like to share? Tom?
We did have a NISA meeting.
All right.
I'd say the majority of the discussion was focused on, kind of, the extension of the Weberville discussion that was brought up on the meeting Dan filled in for, and they're still trying to kind of figure out if it's gonna be advantageous or not to place one of the ambulance crews in Weberville. They had kind of a preliminary draw-up of how many calls take place in that village of Weberville slash Leroy Township area, and, uh, they're gonna dig a little further, find some substantial information to kind of get an idea of actual call volume out that way. Because residents that way would, you know, like to see their EMS provider have an emergency unit a little more in their direction in the case of a serious emergency. If we have two units here, and there's an issue on the far end of the village, they would, they would like to have a EMS unit closer, so we're still kind of working on some data to support that.
Do you think that having a, um, vehicle out there to respond would also be helpful for accidents on 96 and down to 52?
That was brought up.
Because I, I know that that seems to be a hotbed, you know, especially at 52 Grand River, you know, both north and south, Deets Road, um, seems to always have, you know, issues, um, right there at Grand River, so.
That's all definitely in consideration in the discussion, and, so Leroy Township does have, you know, a fire unit down there, with a medical first response team, so they can make it to the highway quickly, but having a, um, having a paramedic unit ambulance get there quickly sometimes can, can be the challenge. And, uh, you know, if you've got a serious injury or cardiac event, it's, you know, seconds count, so.
Would that be a 24/7 service down there, or would it be, um?
That's interesting.
Staff, okay, so that's a part of the discussion, Tim?
There's two 24/7 staffs, full-time, at the Williamson Station, and whether or not we put one there 24/7, or perhaps maybe just a 12-hour shift during the day, um, that's all being discussed.
Okay.
Um, right now, it's difficult to put a 24/7 crew in Weberville, because they don't have, um, the facilities to house living.
Sleeping quarters?
Yeah, they don't have the, quite the facility that we have here in Williamson. You know, part of the discussion was also that apparently there's a bunch of training and stuff that takes place during those shifts at the Williamson site, so to split them up could be difficult, so, anyway, that was the majority of the NISA discussion.
Okay.
Part of what's been brought, is trying to, to figure out the data, basically, what the, what the runtime is to the different areas in the, in the four quadrants that we have,
Yeah.
and whatnot, not just what's in the actual village of Weberville, but what's the runtime on a call that's all the way out in Locke from here versus going from the Leroy State and trying to figure out that data, and then once you look at the data, and then you look at it with, like you were saying,
Yeah.
you know, would it be 24/7? Okay, well, we get the vast majority of our calls on a weekend, or whatever, and try, getting a data set, so then you can figure out, is this needed, is it not needed, but?
Right.
And you can't really draw a, draw a line between the two,
Sure.
you know, because there's even areas, say, like, and maybe we feel township, that are technically mileage-wise closer to the Williamson Station,
Right.
leaving from the Leroy Station, if you headed home to the Polk Road, and, you know, you could probably get there much quicker from the Weberville location as what you could from the Williamson, uh, just not having to go through town, not having to go around Zimmer to go around town.
Right.
So, they're trying to figure that out, and I think that, uh, I think the residents of Weberville, Leroy Lock, would, uh, really appreciate someday to have EMS in it, you know, especially if we've got two full-time here, I think they'd love to see at least one there.
Absolutely. Well, keep us, uh, keep us up to date, uh, as that conversation continues to develop, and, you know, I think that'd be great, you know, to have that, um, first responder service down there too, because, you know, it's important, minutes matter. So, appreciate that. Any, any other meetings that people attended, yes?
I'm planning technically, bud.
Yeah.
We met and then had nothing to really talk about, because they had to withdraw the motion we were trying to do. Um, so, hopefully, and then they were the, uh, applicant was there, promised that by the February meeting that they were gonna have the information we needed done, so, um, our hope is that they will, in fact, do so. Uh, and that way, we can proceed forward with that lot next to, um, Sunnyside. Um, and then, there is another applicant that, uh, recently submitted, so I think we're gonna be looking at that as well in our next one. So, it was a, it was a quick planning meeting.
Yeah, all right. Anyone else, yes, Steve?
We had a TIPA meeting that was canceled.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, John, could you update us as to, have staff had a chance to send out a big package for the Ice House?
We haven't done that yet, I mean, I've, I've got a meeting next week with, I think it's next week, with, uh, Mr. Gormley, to talk about. So, with TIPA, um, every time you take action, it's not set up in the most expedient way, you have to amend the plan, so we have to make sure that anything, any new RFP jives with the existing plan is adopted, and I'm hoping that it does, but that's the hope, so. But there, there hasn't been, it's a good question, there hasn't been any, nothing but issue yet.
All right. Any other meetings? I know some of them were, uh, did not have agenda items, so hopefully, uh, those boards will get back on track in February. Um, I did, uh, attend planning, um, just to hear what was going on with that particular parcel there. Um, so I'll be at, uh, the February meeting again. Um, DDA was a great meeting, we talked about, um, the, in the past, um, six months, eight months, about, uh, branding of the city and how we really market our city, our downtown businesses, um, to encourage not only our residents, um, downtown, but also our visitors, and, and what that looks like. I also attended Parks and Rec, so, um, for you, uh, council members that haven't had board meetings yet, I'll be at your first meeting for the beginning of the year, just to say hello. I like to do that, um, and see what's going on. But, you know, it's a, it's the start of the year, so a lot of things happening, and, um, you know, all good things. So, with that being said, uh, we have another opportunity for, oh, Terry?
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Nothing much.
No, not really.
Except, we, we decided to meet at 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Yeah, yes, you guys did.
That's a big, big deal.
Sure.
Well, that's kind of a, well, I don't know.
Well, and DDA is actually gonna do that too, we are gonna meet at 6:00. So, for you guys with your other boards, you know, have that conversation with your members. If an earlier start time is beneficial to your members, it gets you home earlier in the evening, you know, definitely do that. Um, these two boards did adopt that, and I think everybody was pretty excited about it.
Yes.
So, yeah, so, you know, good things happening, change it up. Um, again, uh, opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes, yes? Come right up, Wendy?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Emily, sorry.
Hi, my name is Emily Marks, I'm on the board of directors for the Williamson Museum, and I just want to make a little addition to what, um, Mitch presented. Uh, quite often, we get donations at the museum that are scrapbooks, that people have compiled. Uh, a lot of obituaries, birth announcements, marriage announcements, a lot of pictures, but they could be real tedious for someone to actually try and look through them and locate them, if they were looking for a particular person. And, so what I did was, I created a database that I call People Finder, and, um, started entering this information. So, the categories are, um, marriages, and they're broken up by bride and groom, uh, births, deaths, photographs. Um, and it's searchable by last name and maiden name. So people can come into the museum, if they want to do some research on a particular person, they can go into this database and just put in a particular name, and they'll get a list of what I've cataloged for, uh, that particular person. They'll show the last name, and then they'll show all the first names, and they can look through there, and then it will show where in the museum that information is located. So they can just go, like, to that scrapbook, the pages are numbered, oh, well, it's on page 23. You know, they might have to look through the 20 things on, on page 23, but it does help them if they're trying to, you know, actually locate some information on, uh, family members. And so, so far, I have over 7,000 entries in the database, and I keep continuing to increase that. Uh, so, just wanted to let you know that that is another resource available at the museum.
That's awesome.
What is about Williamson residents?
Um, not necessarily, it just depends on who put the scrapbook together.
Oh, okay.
Although I do, um, I'm not going to include, uh, someone who's obviously not, you know, if they put in an article, or, you know, maybe, uh, something from Detroit or something like that. Um, so I do edit it a little bit, but a lot of times, I don't actually know whether this person was in Williamson, or, but there's a lot of, you know, we service the four townships, so there's entries from all, all the four townships.
That's fantastic. That is great.
7,000?
Yep, I have over 7,000 entries in there so far.
Very cool.
Fantastic, thanks, Emily, appreciate it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, uh, council member comments, I'll start with the guy that's got the Lions gear on, Dan.
I just wanted to comment on some stuff with the depot. So, my, uh, my dad's family's from Weberville, and my, my mom's family's from Williamson, and my, my dad's family have very few photographs from when my dad was a kid, when my grandparents were kids. I got to think of seeing like 10 or 12 pictures, period. And on one of the way-back Wednesdays, or I think it was Identify This Person or whatever post, my, my grandma Rhines, who's from Weberville, is in one of these pictures, and I'm like, I didn't even realize the depot had anything to do with, and I'd never seen this picture before.
That's awesome.
There, there, there's my grandma, and I'm like, and the family got, it got a really good kick out of that, and that, that was really cool, so I.
That's very cool. I like it when the pictures show up from like middle school, high school, in my era. They're mostly black and white, so, yeah. All right, Scott?
So there's an offer in, in 2022, about 10 things cities can do to affect housing prices, and I'm gonna send it to all of you.
Perfect.
And, uh, we can think about, some of the ones on there, I don't, I don't know what, what they're saying, actually, but maybe you guys will be able to help it out, but it's a starting point, anyway, to answer the school boards and accusations, so.
All right, fantastic. Brandon?
Um, I have, uh, show appreciation for NISA, uh, and to Officer Pilon, uh, unfortunately, she's not here for that. Uh, on Friday, we had, um, a medical emergency with my daughter, and had to have NISA come. Uh, the two medical, uh, emergency tech were phenomenal, um, they came in a very hectic situation and calmed everybody down. Officer Pilon showed up randomly, um, from hearing it, and he took my son, who was panicking about his sister, uh, took him aside, was very good at calming him down and entertaining him, so. Officer Pilon showed up randomly from hearing in, he took my son, who was panicking about his sister, took him aside, and was very good at calming him down and entertaining him, so that he wasn't focusing on what was going on there. So NISA did a phenomenal job, and we can't thank them enough for getting there quickly and taking care of it, so they did an excellent job. So if you can pass that along to Chief, to Officer Pilon, we'd appreciate that.
That was okay.
That was great, yeah, she's fine.
Excellent. All right, Steve?
I, just great to see individuals come out and support Williamson, and tonight we had an example with Emily and Mitch, of the amount of time that they spend in making things, not necessarily right, but making people want to be able to visit and realize why Williamson is such a great place to live. I appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, Terry.
Good question, is there a third book in the works?
You're retired now, come on, the answer should be easy.
Yeah, the, the one book came out in early December, Stories from Williamson's Past, Volume Two. I don't know, I've had some people approach me about some ideas, but I, when I cover my costs for this, as I did with my first one, I give some of the profits from each sale of the book to our endowment fund at the museum, so I need to sell some more, but I can't, because the museum's closed, so people can't come down and buy some of this. But, as you mentioned, the...
Nice plug. It may be as interesting as a church book.
You can go to Will Long Studio Shop, wherever it is this week, okay?
It's been moving around.
And, yes, yes. And Barrett's books, Julie's got it down there as well. I've got Book Talk set up with the Weberville and Williamson Library, and I have one, too. But one thing is about, one of the chapters is about Franklin Pierce Van Buren, he built the cold storage building, some people call it the Ice House. He's, he built that, it's the second one, the first one burned, and so there's a whole chapter on him in there, and he was also was a township supervisor and a school board member for like thirty years for both. So I'm always, anytime that building ever gets sold or whatever, I'm gonna say, you need to read this book about what was going on in here, but it was the first, what they called it, cold storage building in the state of Michigan supposedly, that building. He built it in eighteen ninety-one, it burned, and then this one went up in about February nineteen oh one, nineteen oh two, and then he had operated for many, many years. Pretty soon, the elevator took it over in World War II, and it was, you know, Boy Scout How to House. But that's, so his, his life's in there, and his granddaughter, she's ninety-four, I interviewed her for the book, she lives in upstate New York, and I called her, and she actually talked more than me, so she's kind of my hero. So anyway, she got back with me and loved it, but I just want to let you know, if you want to know some cool stuff about Williamson, you know, you could, either one of those books, it'd be kind of, be helpful. I'm retired, so, you know, I shouldn't mind. But the two brick factories in town, that's like seventy or eighty pages of stuff, a lot of what, like Jenison Field House, that's from Williamson, that, the outside brick is all from, was it Williamson Lakes Estates?
Yeah.
That was that one. If you go to downtown Stockbridge, they have, on Elizabeth Street, they have an old high school from nineteen thirty, that came from the other brick company on Mill Street, which was called Williamson Brick Company. So there were two, and almost all the state police posts in Michigan that were built from about thirty to like forty, all came from the one on Grand River, all the outer brick did. So we had a lot of, you know, Williamson's kind of a big deal, so that's what I find fascinating about that, so I wish, you know, people could learn, learn more about it. But book three, I don't, I don't know what book three, it's not like my wife, the more I write, the less I talk to her, so I think that's why she wants more.
Have it come into council, we'll help you answer.
Yeah.
All right. Last on the end, Tom?
I just kind of reiterate what everyone else had, and thank you guys for coming and sharing about the museum. I'm kind of embarrassed to admit that I didn't know nearly as much about the museum as I do now, after you've shared it, so I'm interested, and I'm gonna pop in and check it out sometime, and I've even got, if I can find them, I've got some yearbooks from the fifties, I bought at a yard sale, and you probably already have them, but, you know, maybe somebody that knows somebody in them would want them, so.
What we try to do is keep two copies, but we have some, when, you know, certain age group kind of passes, we get a bunch of them, and then we do sell them and take the money. People'll say, well, somebody else's name will be in it, but some people really want that. So we get, we get more requests than I thought, starting with the museum, you think, is this a museum? But you get people email, they call, they come in, they write letters, they'll text you, so we, it's a pretty, like I said, I never would have guessed that we had over two hundred and thirty people come in on a Wednesday last year, and that's, you know, so there's usually somebody always in there. I will say this, Rick Shuck and Paul Enfield have been there for about four months, matter of fact, Paul said when we opened and back up, they're trying to do a comprehensive history of the Williamson Fire Department, and that includes the chiefs, all the apparatus dispatchers, EMT, ambulance people, the whole bit, and our first newspapers are from eighteen eighty-six. So we were able to get to about eighteen ninety-nine, the chiefs, how much they were paid, how much firefighters were paid for runs, all the locations of the fire department. This building was built as a combination city hall fire department in eighteen ninety.
Sounds like, sounds like a new book.
Yeah, they've talked about it, I've talked about it, they're thinking about maybe doing something like that, so that's been really fun, but we get sidetracked about, oh, look at this sports store, oh, she was the homecoming queen, okay. So we do a lot of talking, but that's something, we're open for a lot of research, we have a lot of people come in.
Well, and I'll put a plug in, too, to our community, you know, if you've got Williamson history and you need a caretaker of it, please see our museum. This community is so rich with history. I actually have some items from a classmate, his dad collected items, so I need to get with you to hand those over to you, because you're such good stewards of it. You know, it's the brand-new year, we've got new, you know, board meetings happening, it is Michigan, we're anticipating an ice storm of some sort, but then also a thaw out, so it could be icy and wet and everything through this remainder of this week, but there's good things happening. We're working on events for this year, and we'll be able to publicize those shortly, and, you know, just getting in contact with our service organizations, so that we can better partner up with them, but excited about twenty twenty-four and what it will bring to Williamson, and so just remember, no parking on city streets between two and five AM, so our DPW can get up there and do what they need to when pure Michigan does